Good morning, and welcome to the meeting for the Board of Commissioners. And we will begin as is customary with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda, we will have public comment in the absence of Mr. Weisner.
Good morning, I'm Angela King Swiger from Fort Indian Town Gap. We have artillery training that's happening April 7th through the 11th, and mortar training April 11th through the 14th, and demolitions training the 12th through the 13th. In addition to those trainings, we'd like to let members of the public know that we're doing some water operations training at Marquette Lake, April 8th through the 12th. And anglers and other visitors at this time should be advised that fishing is only allowed from the shoreline. And there'll be signs posted as well to let folks know. We're continuing our spring prescribed burn season. And we just completed hosting the Pennsylvania National Guard Best Warrior Competition, which is a competition for our soldiers in various skills. And the two winners of the competition will go on to Camp Doss in West Virginia. We're moving into our busy training season, which is our summer months, and we're looking forward to it. And if you'd like additional information about Fort Indian Town Gap or receive text messages to your phone, just a reminder, you can sign up or alert Pennsylvania, our mass notification system, by visiting readypa.gov and selecting Fort Indian Town Gap. Or you can follow us on Facebook. Pending your questions, that's all I have.
I just have a question.
Sure.
When you say water training, what type of things are you talking about and activities?
I'm anticipating water bucket training, I can verify. Where they fly the helicopters with the water buckets underneath, but I can verify. You're welcome.
I was wondering trout fishing, where all was it stocked?
They generally stock Marquette Lake and also the creek right next, Indian Town Gap Run, I think it is.
Indian Town Run?
Yeah.
And do people have to get additional permits from you to fish there?
No, but they do need to have a valid Pennsylvania fishing permit.
That's understood. Okay. Thank you.
We move to approve our minutes of our past meeting.
Make a motion to approve the most recent meeting minutes.
And I'll second that motion.
They're moved and seconded, and the additions, deletions, or corrections. Is Catholic prepared? Then we know there are none. There are none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved. Thank you. Then we'll go on to our treasurer's report.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have receipts on April the 2nd and April the 3rd of $1,860,730.8. That brought us to a total cash of $6,657,573.86. Our expenditures this week were $2,651,214.25. An undistributed tax claim is $68,833.23. So we have a balance of $3,937,526.38.
We'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report is submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Okay, I have some debt payments that we need to approve. We have a debt payment to Wells Fargo Bank for our 2006 bank loan. And the amount is $154,251.45.
You want to take these one at a time?
Yes.
Make a motion that we pay Wells Fargo, the debt payment is red.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Okay, and then we also have a 2008 bank loan from Wells Fargo that we owe $26,021.25 to.
I'll make a motion to pay the 2008 bank loan to Wells Fargo.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
And we also owe $62,659.66 to Fulton Bank for a loan in 2015.
Make a motion to pay Fulton Bank the due balance from 2015 loan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Okay, and for our general obligation bond, 2015, we owe $40,031.25, and this is to Fulton Financial.
I'll make a motion to pay Fulton Financial for the 2015 general obligation bond.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we can add that bond. Any other question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
And also for Fulton Financial, we have a jump GOB for 2016, which is $163,960.
And who is that to?
That's to Fulton Financial.
Fulton Financial, welcome. All right, make a motion to pay the obligation to Fulton Financial.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question or comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
And lastly, we have a GOB bond for 2017 that's due to Fulton Financial in the amount of $32,075.
I'll make a motion to pay the $32,075 general obligation bond to Fulton Financial for the 2017 bond.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Okay, thank you. If you're interested, the total for those are $478,998.61.
I have noticed they're getting smaller.
Yeah, and this one in April is not as big as the one we paid in October.
Right.
And so how soon will it be to work out of that debt?
I have no idea.
You have no idea?
Just do it.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. We're getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Sally, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies.
Michelle Edris, Director of Human Resources.
Leanne Shank, Human Resources Assistant.
We may proceed.
Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Cynthia Luce Morgan, Law Clerk, resignation effective June 10th. James W. Holtry, Administrator of Children and Youth Retirement, effective June 1st. Diana Spruessbank, Receptionist, resignation effective November 17th. Luz Marquez Lebold, Part-Time Developmental Assistant, removal effective March 18th. And I want to rewind to Diana Spruessbank, the receptionist. The resignation was effective November 17th of 2018. Ivan Baptiste, Casual Call Developmental Assistant, removal effective March 29th.
I'll move to approve the resignations and terminations.
Now, seconded.
We have a motion and a second to accept those changes. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Under FML leaves of absence, Joel and Saun, voter registration, 12 weeks of intermittent FML effective February 28th. Kelly Musenix from Renova, 15 days of uncaged leave of absence effective March 4th with a return date of March 25th. Kimberly Masser, ITS, excuse me, Information Technology Services, 13 days of FML effective April 3rd. Linda Core, Assessment Office, 18 days of FML returning on April 1st. Wanda Warner, Pathonitary's Office, 8 days of FML returned March 25th. And Renee Bena Sturker from MHRDEI, 12 weeks of FML effective April 22nd.
Make a motion to approve the leaves of absence, as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve those changes. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers and promotions, Nicole Sheridan, promotion from Fiscal Assistant at MHRDEI to Administrative Officer 2 at the rate of $1,592.26 by weekly, effective April 8th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that change of status. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, Buildings and Grounds would like to hire Mike Timberling as a maintenance mechanic at the rate of $1,145.34 by weekly, effective April 22nd. Clarence Schach Memorial would like to hire Sally Satch as a receptionist at $15 per hour, effective April 6th. And the Clerk of Courts would like to hire Diana Henriquez as a General Clerk C at the rate of $855.26 by weekly, effective April 8th.
Make a motion to approve those hirings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any question or comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following. Robert Eby, incremental increase Corporal at the prison to the rate of $24.53 retro to April 22nd, 2018. Robert Eby, annual increase as a Corporal at the prison to the rate of $26.49 effective December 30th, 2018. Anthony Hornberger, incremental increase as a Corporal at the prison, retro $24.53 to July 15th, 2018. Anthony Hornberger, annual increase Corporal at the prison to the rate of $26.49 retro to December 30th, 2018. Brian Alexander, one-year incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $16.44 effective January 27th. And Zachary Sohoka, one-year incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $16.44 effective January 27th. Tyler Workheiser, incremental increase telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services to the rate of $17.83 effective April 7th. And the following three telecommunicators are the same. Caitlin Clay, Russell Weitzel, Dustin McQuaid, all to the rate of $17.83, all effective April 7th. And Jennifer Roscoe, the same. Derek Hilton, incremental increase telecommunicator in Department of Emergency Services to the rate of $17.15 effective March 24th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
To mandate conference seminars, Ruth Snyder from Community Action Partnership would like to attend a Roma update session in Morgantown, West Virginia, July 10th and 11th with lodging mileage meals reimbursement, mandated by DCED. Susan Christner and Dwight Penberth from Probation Services would like to attend the Graduate Response Systems Forum in State College, May 16th. $60 total registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by JCJC. Sally Barry and Audrey Rocco from Probation Services would like to attend the Evidence-Based Practice Leadership Academy in Scranton, June 4th, 5th, and 6th, lodging reimbursement mandated by PBPP. Michelle Marshall, Jamie Rocco Rokowski, Alex Troutman, Olivia Spees, and Jamie DeShawn from Probation Services would like to attend the Sentencing Guidelines in PA in Harrisburg, April 29th, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBPP. Susan Christner, Dwight Penberth, and Constance Dowhauer from Probation Services would like to attend the Case Plan Forum in State College, October 2nd, $90 total registration fee with meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by JCJC. Susan Christner, Constance Dowhauer, and Amanda Baylor from Probation Services would like to attend the YLS Master Training Recertification in Harrisburg, June 11th, $90 total registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by JCJC. Diana Rosa Martier from Probation Services would like to attend the New User Juvenile Probation Training in Mechanicsburg, June 19th through the 21st, 13 credits mandated by PBPP. Amanda Ramos from Probation Services would like to attend the Administrative Assistance Conference in Harrisburg, May 5th, $149 total registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBPP. And a previously approved training for Keith Smith and Taylor Stein Snyder from Children and Youth to attend the heroin training in Mechanicsburg. Due to inclement weather, the date was changed from February 25th to April 1st with mileage meals tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS.
Make a motion to approve the mandated conferences, as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mandated what's your question? Conferences. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Under requested, Jeffrey Bowler from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend a Protective Services Supervisor Training in Ready, May 21st with mileage and parking reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve that Area Agency on Aging request. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Michelle Edris, Leanne Shank, and Stephanie Knoll from Human Resources would like to attend the Wellspan 2019 Wellbeing Roundtable in Lebanon on April 12th and on October 10th with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve that HR request. Comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Ginny Mauser from MHRDEI would like to attend the 2019 PA CARES Training Summit in Denver, May 22nd, no further reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that MHRDEI request. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Nicole Snyder from MHRDEI would like to attend the Adapting Mental Health Therapies for Dooley Diagnosed Individuals in Mechanicsburg, May 31st with mileage reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve that MHRDEI request. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Nicole Snyder from MHRDEI would like to attend the Program Integrity, Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Training in Grantville, June 5th with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
I'm sorry. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Jonathan Fitzke from Planning would like to attend the Regional Operations Forum Workshop in Lytham Heights, Maryland, May 21st and 22nd with no other reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that planning request. Any comment or question? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
John Schach from Probation Services would like to attend the Spring 2019 STJAP Conference in State College, April 9th with no other reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that probation request. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Don Polizio from the Treasurer's Office would like to attend the 2019 Spring PA Treasurer's Association Conference in State College, April 10th with mileage reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second from the Treasurer's Office. Any discussion? Objections? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself, and then we will proceed. Warden Robert Carnes from the Lemon County Correctional Facility. I also have the county administrator conveniently on my cellphone to partake in the meeting as well, if you guys have a comment to add. Commissioners, I'm here before you today to address two initiatives. The first initiative being comprehensive inmate healthcare at the correctional facility, as well as moving forward with a VIVITROL injection treatment program. It's a reentry initiative that we've already registered a grant. And what I'll be asking for is just to move forward on that. But to get to the comprehensive inmate healthcare, this is in response to an RFP that we drafted and announced on February 7th at your Commissioners' meeting regarding contracted healthcare at the facility. As a result of that RFP, we had four vendors, contract vendors, respond to the mandatory tour that we had on February 19th. As a result of that tour, we had three of the four vendors respond with proposals by March 8th, which was the deadline. As of right now, I'm recommending, based on all the written proposals that we've received, one proposal wasn't for comprehensive healthcare. It was only for a component. The other two vendors that responded, one did not. The other two vendors that responded submitted proposals for comprehensive inmate healthcare, which is a medical component, a mental health component, and also a dentistry component as well. So why we're here today is I would ask that we would move forward, and I'm asking your permission to move forward, to the negotiation phase of signing a contract and formulating a contract with Prime Care Medical. And the reason I signed, or actually I'm recommending Prime Care Medical, they're a local-based company out of Harrisburg. They have over 30 years of experience. They started in 1986. They have over 74 correctional facilities with 2,300, currently serving 2,300 inmates.
23,000.
23,000, excuse me, thank you, Jamie. I knew that phone would come in handy somehow. But 23,000 inmates in 74 correctional facilities. They're the largest medical vendor in four PA counties in Pennsylvania. But they also serve facilities in West Virginia as well. They have a longstanding track record as far as delivering comprehensive and quality healthcare at rates that are affordable for respective counties that contract with them. Every neighboring county in proximity of Lemon County surrounding us, we're like the hubcap without a contracted service. Lancaster, Dolphin, Berks, and Scuco all have Prime Care. I did investigate with all these counties as far as, you know, why or why not they like Prime Care for the most part. They're extremely vested company. They've been part of, obviously, the Pennsylvania County Correctional Association's conferences for the last 15 years that the County Correctional Association has existed. They're active members in that, as well as providing, you know, trainings to counties that not only participate, but those that don't participate as well. They have a history in corrections. Todd Haskins, their Chief Operating Officer, actually started his earlier career in Gredeford as a nurse. So they have a true understanding of what it takes to be in the correctional healthcare field. And also, what they do bring to the table is not only a lower bid price, but also an accreditation with the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, which is a nationally-recognized organization for deliveries of services. And they have to maintain an accreditation through their policy procedure, as well as performance. And they're willing to bring Lemon County into accreditation, which obviously is always a plus from a liability side. So with that said, I would recommend that we would move forward and seek negotiation for a contractual agreement with the county. I believe they're suggesting a three-year contract. That can be modified at any juncture, if you wish to go for, you know, two years, three years, or after the third year, two-year continuances, whatever that may be. That would be within the negotiation realm. But I have really nothing other to add what they have, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer that.
Yes, Warden, I finally got those little tiny pictures on my PDF file to open up so I could read them. And then I worked with IT to be able to print some of the documents because it was very difficult to read. But the bottom line is, I don't know from which optional price you are negotiating, the $3,031,626.57 or the $2,689,633.
We'd be negotiating from the top price, that being the lowest price of all the bids, but the highest price we would be negotiating from because what that adds, what that includes is a dentistry component we don't have, as well as an electronic health records system that would be installed in the correctional facility to expedite medical records, mental health records, and it would all be automated, as opposed to a paper trail, which is right now at the facility. And that was part of the RFP, that that would be included as well as a medical billing component, which Prime Care has. They're the only vendor in PA that has an agreement with CCAP with Act 22 monies for those inmates that are sentenced and that can be treated at the medical assistance rate and save dollars in that regard. What they do is they basically act as a conduit to each respective county facility, which Pemic does, for those people that have contracted with Pemic, which is cost management costs.
And to put some of our staff at ease, if they're current medical employees, we're hoping to recommend that they be absorbed.
Absolutely. I have that Commissioner already written in the RFP that they would be given first consideration. And those, you know, from top down, whoever's in the medical department, that the contracted vendor so chooses to keep. With my recommendation, which I'm recommending anybody that they wish to keep, they're certainly welcome to do that. Again, this is about comprehensive care and bolstering what we already have. And at the end of the day, if they so choose to retain anybody that, and I'm recommending they do, just for transition purposes. It makes good sense. In the way of the world right now, it's difficult. And I know that was one of the motivating factors, was maintaining, you know, consistent, a full staffing, which is why we've got to the point where we're using several different agencies to contract nurses. This way, we've put the onus on the contractor to provide that consistent staffing complement that we have such a difficult time to do as a county. You're welcome.
Just remind us of the timetable, when you expect to actually have this all worked out and implementation. Just a ballpark.
A ballpark? We're looking to, after the announcement today, we're looking to meet with Prime Care, with Todd Haskins, Tom Weber, the CEO, and start hammering out some type of contract. Till the solicitor, till David Warner takes a look at the contract. He'll be an active part of that. And we actually come to an agreement as far as what is palpable. I will come back to this board, to the Commissioner Board, and a request that we sign the contract based upon all the nuts and bolts. And hopefully, we're looking as a timeline to potentially have Prime Care in place by the end of June.
I just want to say thank you for carrying out the RFP and doing the late work to do this. With that said, I would be willing to make a motion to have the Warden move forward with negotiations with Prime Care and under the direction of the assistance of our solicitor and reach a final number where we can bring them onboard, so.
A second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Warden Carnes, how much is this compared to what the county is now paying for prison healthcare right now?
You mean the difference?
Yes.
I can't, Warden, I can't actually hear the question at all. If you could repeat.
The question is, what's the difference between the proposed healthcare as opposed to our current healthcare in cost?
Okay, you mind me covering that?
No, go ahead.
Was that Gordon?
That's Gord, Gord.
Gordon, if we take all of the components of the medical care at the prison currently, which would be nursing, medical contracts, all of the outside billing, specialists, all of that together, fringe benefits for the nurses that we employ, the contracted nurses that we have currently, all of that combined comes somewhere between $1.8 and $2 million currently, per year. You know, as the Warden mentioned, there are things You know, as the Warden mentioned, there are things in this proposal and things that we've requested that are supplemental or improvements, basically, to what we have. There's going to be more time spent at the facility by the medical personnel. It may cut down on the number of transports to specialists if the things are done in-house. It may cut down on the amount of time that CEOs need to spend, you know, to and from medical, which could translate into less overtime, so, you know, right now, a straight comparison is somewhere between 1.8 and $2 million, but we certainly hope that we're going to realize some other savings and benefits that maybe we didn't even discover yet.
Okay. Does taking this to a third-party contractor, so to speak, remove the onus of the top of litigation that the county faced in the Torrey-Hur case?
Could Jamie hear it?
Jamie, could you hear that?
No, I missed that too, sorry.
With a third-party contractor as this, does this remove the onus of the top of litigation that the county faced in dealing with the Torrey-Hur case?
Yes, yeah, there's a segment of the proposal and of the RFP that we demanded that they take on their own risk liability. In fact, they responded and said they, you know, they do that routinely with all of their contracts, they're backed by the Woods of London in terms of their bonding, and they also provide risk management individuals that they would provide to us to come to the prison to look at things, to make sure that, you know, that we're reducing their risk as much as we can, and our carrier, as any kind of risk pool has and is willing to do the same thing. So, but to answer your direct question, yes, the liability shifts from what we have now to the contracted vendor.
And just one other question, and perhaps this is a stupid one, but will there be daily visits by an actual physician?
Either of us can answer that one, Warden, go ahead.
The staffing, I have too much stuff going on here. The staffing matrix that has been proposed has been provided for at least forty hours for two mental health clinicians to be on duty, at least fifteen hours by a doctor weekly, a medical physician, a psychiatrist for weekly, I can't recall the number of hours, but the staffing matrix is for twenty-four-seven with an RN that's actually on duty, even on weekends, with two other nurses or nursing assistants. So, as far as the credential people that are going to be onsite, there will be more credential individuals in the mental health, in the healthcare industry than we currently have. That's correct.
In addition to onsite, they are also incorporating telemedicine and telepsychiatry to the services, so they'll do.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie.
Any other questions or comment? Motion's on the floor, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, both same signs, so moved.
And my last request is that at last month's prison board meeting, and to bring people up to speed with the VIVITROL injection program that was presented by Drug and Alcohol Director, Mr. Dunlawyer, that the prison board had agreed that we move forward in seeking a funding stream for an injection program, which we have applied for that grant, and I'm requesting that the commissioners will be in agreement that they would sign off on the grant so we could submit it by, actually, the April 12th deadline. We're expecting for that grant to drop, since it is a fiscal grant by the end of June, hopefully, if in fact we qualify. But Jim, Director Dunlawyer, I should say, is bent on starting the program regardless, it would be managed by the RACE project, and in the same group that manages Cumberland County's injection program. I feel it would be an advantage for, you know, as a reentry initiative, to provide this injection treatment, and it is a voluntary treatment, and it's been proven to be effective. I know the Department of Corrections is actually the origin of the funds, and PCCD is the management of the funds. So, I request that the commissioners consider moving forward and signing off on the grant so we can move forward.
Make a motion to move forward with the VIVITROL grant.
We have a motion and a second, and you mentioned reentry a couple times, do you want to just define when you say reentry for the folks?
Reentry is for those inmates that are awaiting discharge to the street and/or to an intermediate punishment program, or actually just they have served their sentence. I mean, and this is where not only where the facility comes into play, but also we do have a reentry, you know, coalition with a lot of vested members in that, that are interested in those people that are coming back into society, you know, another reentry or a reentry initiative, like the Day Reporting Center as well, assuring that individuals get a start in the right direction, specifically with the injection, for example, the injection program. Those individuals, we have, we incarcerated approximately sixty percent of our inmates have a drug and alcohol issue related to their crime, they may not be in the facility for drugs and/or alcohol, but normally there's a substance abuse issue that is related to the commission of that crime. Of those sixty percent, a good seventy-five percent will return to prison for one of their related issues, if in fact they are not enrolled in some type of treatment program, counseling, therapy, or whatever. What this does, and what VIVITROL does, is satiate opioid and alcohol, crack, and provided, you know, all the parameters have to follow, all the, because there are safety issues as far as how it's actually dispensed. But again, it is a voluntary treatment program, I think that if in fact we offer it at the facility, we're contributing, at least getting people on the right track that have legitimate issues to try to get their life back together.
Thank you. I only ask that because we recently got Samuel Ortiz, we invested in a paid person to be the coordinator for the reentry program, so that'll give it more strength, and it dovetails nicely with what you're.
Well, and I think what it'll do, it'll be in conjunction, we already have a pre-release training and classes now that, you know, through the onus of Jubilee Ministries, and it's not a religious-based program, it's actually an educational program that assists those inmates at a point. So, that will actually segue nicely into that, providing at least something for individuals to grasp onto, instead of just being discharged to the street with no direction, and literally that's what happens to individuals, being discharged to the street. They need to be pointed in the right direction.
Anything else? Yes, go ahead.
Warden, in the past, you have been reluctant to use Suboxone, for example, or write off on Methadone.
Yes.
Maybe even going a step further from reluctant, rejected entirely, what makes VIVITROL different?
VIVITROL's an antagonist, and VIVITROL you don't get high from. Suboxone, and as I'm told, I'm not a medical specialist, but Suboxone and Methadone have residual effects, and in fact, it doesn't satiate, it just replaces the habit that they're using. And I don't feel that there's proven data to support continued use of that. How long do you stay on it? You know, VIVITROL, it helps satiate the use and doesn't actually replace, you know, opioid. What it's doing is changing not only the physical process, but also the thought process in addition, which can be psychological as well. I am more apt to at least provide this to an individual that is on the street, or that is getting ready to be released to the street, and again, it's their choice than having Methadone being utilized for individuals that are in-house, traveling around, traversing the hallways of the facility, under the influence of a synthetic opioid, which sometimes is more dangerous than organic opioid, especially for detoxing from, and that's what we do right now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to remind you, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved.
Okay.
All right, Warden, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your talk. Good luck.
I promise I'll show up.
Good morning. probation services. Early in this year, the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency announced the availability of federal justice assistance grants for law enforcement agencies, including county agencies, to combat and prevent crime, and also including possible gang activity. Eligible activities included the purchase of tactical weaponry, updated equipment, innovative police policies, data shared activities, there's a wide range of eligible activities under this particular grant announcement. But in response to that announcement, we have prepared to submit to PCCD a grant in the amount of $14,276 to update equipment used by our adult engine operation officers. First part of the budget is the purchase of six new TASER units, and when we say units, we mean the tasers plus the accessories, batteries, the cartridges, holsters, warranty protection. By the TASER we have now, our pass are warranty protection, and they are as effective, they're not useless, but we thought that we could use that money to update the most recent weaponry that are called the X26, which is really kind of the state-of-the-art piece of equipment that officers can have, and the idea is to not only protect the officers, but also the use of TASER, knowing that officer has a TASER, could diffuse a potentially dangerous situation from getting worse, or to really prevent or thwart any ongoing criminal activity on the part of the offender. Of course, officers aren't trained and recertified annually on the use of TASERS, and also just updates about law and policies, a possible case law that is done, we have in-house trainers, we're fortunate to have, to cover that, but it's important to have officers have updated equipment, and that would be one of the parts of the budget that we are hoping to get JAG money for. And the other part of the budget, under the grant announcement, would be for the purchase of 1,014 panel drug testing cups. When we say fourteen panel, what that really means is that these are cups that are able to detect the presence of up to fourteen illicit substances that some offenders are known to use. And that just is really to use that state-of-the-art equipment to enhance, and really improve the accuracy and really the integrity of the whole drug testing system, so we do get an accurate result, which can then determine the appropriate levels of supervision. It isn't necessarily to use as a goddamn, if somebody tests positive, although sanctions obviously could be a part of that, but also be determined what's the next course, and that could be a referral to rehab or treatment, if a drug test indicates that there's really a serious drug problem with an offender. Getting that person to rehab rather than incarceration would be really a better avenue, and we give somebody rehab, it could really prevent them from engaging in further criminal contact. Their drug dependency might have been the thing that may lead them to commit criminal actions in the first place. So, with that in mind, we do have that in our budget to get those items for probation officers, there's no local match with this particular round of grant funding, which is always a good thing. The grant would start July 1st, and we would really, even though we've already submitted the application because of the short deadline, we really would not know until the commission meets sometime in June whether or not we would be eligible for this particular grant.
I just, the TASER purchase would help to replace some of our outdated equipment that we have right now, and we see some issues with performance, and half of our complainer no longer supported by the company, they're outdated.
How old are they?
I'm going to say at least ten years.
Oh, wow.
So, we could replace, the technology is replaced, and we can't replace the batteries or any other, or any service element that they have.
I'll make a motion that we grant permission for them to move forward with the grant application.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved. Keep up the good work.
We'll try.
We certainly get our fair share, and then some of these grants that are available in this pool. We appreciate you keeping up with all that, thank you.
We'll do what we can, hopefully they'll like it up at PCCD. We can get posted on that one, so, thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Introduce yourselves, and then you may proceed with proceedings.
I'm Bob Dowd, Director of the Department of Emergency Services, and I'm here to seek permission to apply for two grants today. The first is the annual emergency management performance grant, and we're applying for This is a salary and benefits substitution.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the emergency management performance grant.
Second? It's been seconded, any amplification or?
No, it helps pay the salaries, the benefits, I'm happy with that.
Pretty straightforward grant.
Yeah.
Very good. Any questions in favor, west? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved. Okay.
The second that I have is both requesting permission to apply for the annual Hazmat Team Response Fund grant, as well as accepting the report that we sent in the state as part of that. The amount we're applying for is $22,671.75. This grant is used to enhance hazmat team capabilities, this particular round will be used to continue our air pack replacement schedule, as well as purchase some additional meters and replace some aging suits, let me say suits, the Level A entry suits.
And you talked in the grant about railroad exercise or spills or something?
It's identified as a significant risk to the county that we, as a hazmat team, need to be prepared for. The railroad brings a lot of injuries through, so.
So, there's some training in there for them?
This grant does not include.
Just mentions.
Training, it mentions it as a risk factor that we're preparing for.
Understood then, thank you.
There is a separate grant that we apply for that we do railroad, in fact, to a part of.
I remember, yeah. Okay. I just wondered if this was a continuation?
No, we will be doing another one of those shortly.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the report and that we allow the emergency services folks to move forward with the grant application.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any question or comment? Are you none or in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, may I go off topic just briefly?
I'm sorry.
As far as dry weather wildfire risk, where are we right now?
I have not heard of any significant wildfire risk, but I'll indicate it right now.
All right, thank you.
And who's on your presentation?
Betsy Dunhill, Lanham County, Rhode Island, Warden.
And Bill Dewan, Lancaster, Lanham County, Habitat for Evangeline.
Okay, I'm here this morning to present a request from Lancaster, Lanham County, Habitat for Evangeline, for a $200,000 affordable housing fund grant. That grant will be used for the rehabilitation of three properties at 422, 424, and 428 Cumberland Street. Those were properties that were damaged by fire in May of 2017. Those were properties that were damaged by fire in May of two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost of the project, Habitat, is about five-hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, so the county's commitment, if they choose to do so, would make a dent in their cost. It would also allow Habitat to begin work on the project while they're working on their fundraising from corporations and private donations. The project is worthwhile. It's going to be an improvement to the neighborhood because it will be addressing the dangerous and blighted conditions that exist there. But as of what is, the fact that it will provide affordable housing, homeownership, I should say, for deserving families. And for those reasons, I would recommend that the commissioners approve the two-hundred thousand dollar grant. The balance in the trust fund stands at approximately one point two million, so there will be funding available. And if it is approved, we're suggesting that there be a condition that we replace against the properties, that would be satisfied when the property rehab is completed.
I'll take a, make a motion to providing two-hundred thousand dollar grant to Habitat for Humanity to create affordable housing for families along Cumberland Street at the four-hundred block where there was a fire. And I want to say thank you because I think that will definitely improve the gateway, as you so put it, to Leaven City and county. It'll make a better impression. And I think in addition to safety, we also can make people feel better about our country.
We have a motion in a second, and I'd just like to add the, this is a little higher than my comfort level per unit, but I am looking at this as an investment in not only Habitat, but also for other, you know, reasons of re-energizing things in Leaven County for Habitat, so that's where I am with it. But I appreciate you coming over now twice in a row to give us this explanation and for our support. So I just wanted to add that to it. Anything else? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Time may have been. Good morning. Good morning. Introduce yourselves and then proceed.
I'm Jim Dunware, I'm with Leaven County Drug and Alcohol Commission.
And I'm Kevin Trum, I'm with Leaven County Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities earlier bench. We have two items to discuss this morning. The first is another con, well, an amendment to the contract with the Commonwealth for our health choices program. We've been doing this for nearly twenty years, maintaining agreements with the Commonwealth Department of Human Services. And it seems like a couple times a year, they make tweaks to the agreement. So we have some changes to the program's standards and requirements, as well as the appendices. They are very basic and pretty much innocuous in terms of our ability to run the program. Our legal counsel, Lawrence Davis, did a thorough review of those new standards and fully recommends that we move forward with amendment number thirteen to that agreement.
So there's no finances involved, it's all just wordsmithing?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, no changes to the finances.
I make a motion that we grant authority to MHI DEI to move forward with the amendment.
To move in second is that we approve the changes in amendment thirteen. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you very much. They are requiring three original signature pages, so we have those to pass on if you. And secondly, we do have some amendments to the contracts with our service providers in the MHI DEI department. As you know, I need to come in here several times a year to present those changes to you. I had sent it over earlier. There are a total of seventeen amendments for this current year, fiscal year eighteen nineteen. The amendments will resolve in an increase in a hundred and fourteen thousand and twenty-six dollars. However, we have money within our existing budget to fund those changes. And we're not being looking forward to the commission to provide any additional funding to pay for those things. That should make it go easier. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the seventeen contract amendments that you have posted to the county.
I'll second the motion.
Make a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Discussion? Are you not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm just glad he has.
We do, you know, balance him out, right? And my, I was only going to comment that we did pass the warnings in earlier with the patrol grant request and so on, so.
I have to admit, I was eavesdropping.
Okay.
And I just want to let everyone here know that he presented it very well. The difference between the patrol as opposed to other MATs.
He nailed it.
He did. And I asked him, you know, if he would read up on this and he said, well, I think it's a good idea, great program, and I'm hoping that the grant is approved through the DOC.
Oh, three appointments. All right, question?
Do you want to read the names? Were you finished with that?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Jim Dunware, Director of Drug and Alcohol, is seeking your approval on the reappointment of Michael Frye, Jennifer Shane, Michael Wadrick, and William White as members of the advisory council with the term to February nineteenth, nineteen twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the board members, or reinstatement, I guess, of the same board members as requested.
Second.
Make a motion in a second to bring up those folks and additions or questions. If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Frye has been on that first for a long, long time. It's a great group of people. Yeah, he's been there all the time. All of them.
Is the chairman of the chair?
He is the chairman. Finally rose to the top.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Good day, gentlemen.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Jim Holtry, Director of Leaven County Civil Youth. And I'm here to present provider contracts for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. We have fifty-six provider contracts. Twenty-three are not requesting any type of increase. Fifteen are funded by MA and no cost to the county. The remaining eighteen providers, they're requesting an increase of an eight point three percent, which is at what the state approved rate. So I would recommend that we approve the provider contracts for fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
What is the total value of those eighteen increases? You don't have that.
I don't, I always have that.
All right, well, I'll make a motion.
Well, within our budget, I guess.
It's within your budget, so there's no additional costs.
No. When we do the budget, I always put a projection in for increases in placement providers. Usually I put around three to four percent increase.
I'll make a motion to approve the provider contracts as presented by James Holtry.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve those contracts. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We're a minute late, but that's not too bad.
It's pretty good.
I may need to call this.
You can look to go up right here. Uh, yeah, I collaborate with her, they want to put you.
I think they're up.
They're right here.
Are you okay?
There's only two of us, so I'm very happy to be there. That's working well, everything you got up there. We appreciate the consideration.
We deserve it.
It's so good to see you.
Good to see you all too.
Thank you.
How are things?
We're moving right along.
All right, first we have from tax claim, seeking your permission to sell property located at twenty-seven A Green Neighbors Park in Conver, H and FHC, with a bid amount of one dollar. Taxes on was thirty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Make a second that we took that one dollar bid. Any comment or question? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
And next we have disabled veterans exemptions. Ernest Gogetz at six-eighteen Richfield Drive in Leavenin, and Carol Martin of six-twenty North State Route nine thirty-four in Engleville.
It'd be my pleasure to make a motion to exempt the disabled veterans from state tax exemption.
I'll second it.
We have a motion? Yeah.
Yeah, I did a double exemption, one on the front, one on the back.
So they'll be still paying their taxes.
Yeah, they'll, no.
Any comment or question? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Next is seeking your approval on a liquid fuels, county aid, application for Easthand Overtownship. The project description is just identified as Pennsylvania. The total message, estimated project cost is two thousand eight hundred and one dollars, and they are requesting a total amount of two thousand eight hundred and one dollars.
Make a motion to approve that grant.
And I'll second the motion.
Make a motion in a second to approve the liquid fuels request. Any comment or question? Are you not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved. We will have a brief adjournment of our meeting to convene the election board. Madam Chairman?
I'm calling to order the meeting of the Board of Elections for Leaven County.
Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. Good morning. I am here today to ask the board for approval of the absentee ballots for the two thousand nineteen primary election. I did provide the board with some samples of the different ballot styles, four different ballot styles, Democratic and Republican. In that also is included Cleona. The Cleona Borough does have a referendum question regarding liquor license, and therefore we also have a nonpartisan absentee ballot for Cleona in this election, and a plain English statement that will be going along with that referendum question, that we will be also giving in Spanish, and I apologize that is one, I should have had that for today, I don't, but as soon as I have that, I will email that to the board. So I am requesting approval for the approval of those ballots.
Has the ballots been reviewed by someone who speaks Spanish?
Yes, they have been reviewed by someone who speaks Spanish. And we are going to make one minor change on it because of that. It is just that on all the ballots, it has that are more than one page, it has both sides of ballot, and in Spanish, all it says is both sides of ballot. So I am having them add the Spanish word for vote. And then one other minor change that I am going to request that the vendor makes to the ballot is, if you look at the Cleona Borough for both either of the parties, I don't think it's, it's clear that it becomes a referendum question, and so I am asking, having them like make a title here at the top that says referendum and then the question, just because it just makes it break it up a little bit better. So I have made all those requests to them. I don't program here, so I have to kind of wait for them. So as soon as I have that, I will definitely let you see it, but those are just kind of minor cosmetic, let's make it look a little bit pretty type deals.
So that header, as it were, would be on all of the ballots, not just the nonpartisan or Cleona?
It would be on all of the Cleona ballots, correct, yes. So Democrat, Republican, and nonpartisan.
Right, yes, okay. I don't think there are other questions.
Then I make a motion that we approve the ballots as submitted with the changes that were suggested and requested.
I'll second that. Fisher, let's see if you have a question.
I do. No, no, not on that. I just didn't want you to adjourn before I ask a question.
Okay. So, so we can, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I believe that would carry it. And then your question?
Yes. The reason I like to ask is because I don't know if this is an election board question or a commissioner board question. So while you're here, I'd like to ask it. Next year is a really big presidential year, which will bring a lot of people out to the polls. And we know about other countries trying to get into our elections. So my question involves something that I heard at the commissioners' conference last week, because I took a class by Jonathan Marks on continuity of operations and those sorts of things. And so I was reviewing our continuity of operations plan for voter registration, so that if something would happen on election day, I wanted to refresh my memory where we would go and those kinds of operations. And what I found was an outdated document referring to Cedar Haven and things of that nature. You may even remember this. I don't know if it was during your time or after.
It was, you did it.
So I really think it needs.
I suppose I remember it then.
I really think it needs an update, so.
And I agree, yes.
And so I bring this, A, to your attention, and B, ask, because it may be too late to wait till after November to start looking at that, I didn't know if you would want to ask the former registrar and current election board member to review it and make some suggestions for updates, or, I don't know the proper procedure, but I'm bringing it so we know what to do here.
Yeah, I believe that's probably going to be a commissioner function, because you will probably have to let us know, because it's not just my office. From the parts that are really updated are outdated are, what happens if my, if something happens to my office, where do we relocate?
Exactly.
And that plan is Cedar Haven. And so that, I think, is something that the commissioner, board commissioner will probably have to, and obviously work through Jamie, the county administrator, on what they, that may be now going forward. I don't know the answer to that question. I think that we have worked as far as polling locations and what the plan would be if something happens at a certain polling location, and those plans are in place. But I don't need to speak to the two that are here, but I believe that's probably something the commissioners will have to decide.
Good, thanks, Michael.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting us.
And Attorney, Heather is the third member of your board, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, he's opposite, yes. Just a couple of things, if you don't mind, before we conclude the board. I just want to just put on record a couple reminders. April twenty-second is the last day to register or make changes to your voter registration before the May twenty-first primary election. So I do want to put that out there. You probably have heard that we have done some redistricting in the, in five different locations within the county, and we now have sixty precincts. There will be a press release that will be issued on Monday regarding that, and where individuals will be able to go and to find where they vote. Any individual that is changing a polling location because of our redistricting will be getting a new ID card. Those ID cards will be, are scheduled to start going out on Tuesday, just waiting for the stock, so, because we're going to have basically about eighty-five hundred and nine thousand ID cards that are going to kind of go out because of the change. And so all of that, I guess, just.
The Board of Elections meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We will now reconvene our meeting for the balance of fifteen seconds.
Just one more, I, Tom from Kelly's Holtry, Community Action Partnership, is seeking your approval to enter into a contract with Larry Savage as a private driver for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program for the twenty-eighteen-nineteen contract period.
Make a motion to approve Mr. Savage as a new driver, same rate supply as he's been using.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second to approve the cap driver, any comment or question? Are you none, no in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Thank you, Kathy.
Motion to return.
Can I revisit the situation with the outdated continuity of operations plan and ask that we authorize Michael to either review or assign one, someone to review that and make sure it's up to date so that we can ensure the presidential election?
I thought he was indicating that he was allowed.
So you don't need a motion for him to proceed, he's allowed to?
I would.
Okay, I just didn't know if you needed to formalize that. Okay.
Sally?
Can I ask something about that? Wasn't that done by E M A or?
Yes, the Department of Emergencies, so there's a lot, even the name of the Department of Emergency Services isn't right, and I don't know that, if they want to do the whole thing, that's great, but I'm extremely, I mean, name changes are one thing, but I'm concerned about continuity of operations because of Cedar Haven being our primary location to move to for a voter.
Yeah, because, well, even for the other offices, I think some of our locations might have been there also. Even I would, I used to store things down there for that purpose of that continuity of government, and of course I don't have that anymore, so mine is in my vault right now, my extra stuff, so.
Okay.
I think that's something that probably needs to be done for the whole county.
Well, then, in addition to Michael, I think, could we please ask the Department of Emergency Services to review the entire, look at a, maybe they had to get a grant to do that, to have somebody redo the whole thing, but we need to move on elections quicker than that. Can, does that take a motion?
No, I can just call Bob Dowd.
Ask me to do it? Okay.
I mean, that could be done at any time, since you're.
So we're in consensus?
We are.
Okay, thank you.
Full agreement. All right, we stand adjourned.